Okay, well, I'll just jump into mental health.
Okay, so mental health, Carter, I'm hoping you can jump in this as well because I know you, you're on their board.
Yo, I'm, I'm looking for the email right now from Melissa, did you get that Sammy?
Yeah, I did. So, um, Amber and Howard, I don't know if you're aware, but mental health is always for the last couple of years has been handled by a region. And the region, the, the employee that does mental health is a county employee, but all of our expenses are reimbursed by the region. That is being eliminated at the end of this fiscal year and mental health is gonna be funded by the state. So, we won't be paying any expenses or being reimbursed for any expensive except if, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Carter, um, the usual like, um, transportation to a facility or, um, that kind of thing, that's still correct, right Carter? We still are gonna have to pay for that.
I believe so.
So, um, if you look in the pages for mental health, the, the only thing that I budgeted for was the residential care facility, um, youth guidance, cause that will still be, if I understand correctly, that will still be the county's responsibility. Um, and then, uh, treatment services. And if I'm understanding correctly, that is all the county is gonna be responsible for, is that correct Carter?
Say that one more time.
The only things that the county is responsible for is the youth residential care and then treatment services.
Yo.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that's exactly broken down there.
Okay. Well, we have two line items, one for each of those, that's how we've currently done it and, and that has never been reimbursed by the region, so there's no change there, that, that we've always done that.
Correct.
And I, they are having a, I don't know, is it teams meeting or something coming up in February, um, to go over some of these changes?
Yeah, on February twentieth.
Yeah. So, I plan on being part of that, just to stay updated and.
So, where is this residential care facility?
There's different ones, it depends and where they're, correct, it can be different care facilities, right? Youth, y- youths usually go to one place, but I don't remember where that is anymore.
They're paying that place the six thousand dollars?
No, we pay per however they have, so like if they have one guy for three days, they'll bill us for that.
Uh, I, I was gonna ask, is that our s- line for C I J D C?
Probably.
Eldor?
Yes.
Okay.
But it couldn't be anywhere though, it doesn't have to be just C I J D C.
Right, that's, that's where we're members of though, and that's where most of them would, would go, yo.
And we're, it could be more than that, that's just where we're going with, we haven't, obviously, we haven't been using that much.
Yeah. It's hard to know from year to year.
Yeah, but going back to three or four years ago, we haven't used that much.
Yeah. So, yeah.
That's a simple budget.
It's pretty easy. Um, yeah, so I, I think that's all we have to budget then, for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Human services. So, there was a lady from the state that actually filled this budget out. She had asked for a copy of the budget. Um, they don't use our facility here in Cassis County anymore, they're out of Spencer, but they still do make payments on part of that facility, but they're never here, all of, everybody from Cassis County has to go to Spencer. Um, but they did budget a little bit for, I don't know if they plan on coming once in a while, I, I don't know, um.
What budget are we on now?
Human services.
Say that again?
Human services.
Oh, human services, okay.
Well, it looks like they're still paying, I mean, they're still getting us this year.
Yeah, there, yeah. So, they're, they're not actually, I have never seen them there, but they're still paying, so, you know, we still have.
They may try on insurance space if they need it.
Right, yeah, so they still have, the front is open, they have an office space, we don't fill it, you know, so.
That's the thirty thousand dollars the state, the state's paying, that's not.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, so I just put in the numbers she had put in, so. Pretty, pretty self-explanatory.
Do they pay monthly or quarterly or something, cause?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're only at twenty eight percent.
I, I don't know. What they, how they pay.
I didn't know if they reduced anything there or not, because the previous years were in that thirty-four ballpark, and then we're only at twenty-eight percent. Our budget has actually been received, so. I didn't know if they cut that back or not, but she put the same stuff in.
Yeah, she did. I don't know.
Well, there's some stuff in, I, I, I'm just assuming you guys are done talking about the human services one. There's some stuff in the department we can, you know, start working on, the main thing that, but that is what Doug wouldn't, it just maybe be the transfers.
Mm-hmm.
And self-insurance.
Oh, yeah.
I did have one question, on sanitary, and we had a line in there that I had marked down that we were gonna leave the same as what was budgeted last year, um.
Which one was it?
So, the line is the three ninety-one forty, uh, the miscellaneous. Um, on my notes, I had marked down that we were gonna leave it the same as last year, the three thousand, but you could still have it as the two thousand there.
I actually have that same note too, but I just, I thought maybe I missed.
Hold on, let me look, let me grab mine now.
I think we did talk about that, I think we went back and forth, so maybe it's okay.
Um, let me see what I wrote.
I thi- I think at the end we may have said just leave it be and put the meeting mileage back.
Well, that's what, when you say leave it be, like, leave it be is what last year's was, or leave it be is what she had, that's, I was under the understanding that we were gonna set it back to where it was last year, just for the fact that we got a new guy coming in and he's gonna be needing to potentially use more of that, and I don't wanna short him in a line that.
So, I have it highlighted, change maintenance to two thousand, change supplies to fourteen hundred. But, that doesn't mean that it didn't get changed and I, but that's just what I had put in the highlight.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be the one right under support.
I think that when we talked about leaving it at three thousand, it was just in case this new person sees something else or something different they need or whatever, so.
And I can change it if you want to.
Yeah, I don't care either way.
Either way.
It's just going back to what it was, it's not like we're raising it, but.
Carter, you got any preference? It's a thousand dollar difference on the one line item.
I, that's fine, if you wanna leave it at the, the three thousand, um, that's what you're discussing here.
Well, she, yeah, she's got it in at two thousand right now, we're, I, uh, Amber and I both have in our notes to leave it at the three thousand that was budgeted last year.
I remember us talking about that, yeah.
Yeah, yo. So.
I mean, I guess it, how mu- how much is it gonna cost to, to go to meetings, I don't know what, what, uh, the fees are for going to sanitary conferences.
Well, yeah.
I think that's what we talked about too, is, is.
Whereas Doug's was lumped in probably with whatever he did.
Yeah, planning and zoning and weed commissioner all together.
Yeah.
Yeah, planning and zoning and.
Yep.
Let's just put miscellaneous back to three thousand a day.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, was there any other things that we had talked about revisiting that while we have time, we just go back and revisit it or, or not? I, I have to kinda look back at every.
Say, do we wanna just start at the beginning?
And flip through, yeah.
Or do we wanna hit the non-partemental, since we haven't really touched on that as much?
Whatever you guys wanna do.
I mean, we could, we could go through that a little bit, it doesn't matter.
So, we must pay someone, we must, uh, budget for someone, um, through the ambulance services department to do mental health transports?
It, it's Phil.
Yep.
Okay.
So, that's part of the deal with the vehicle.
Okay.
Or, or other V M S staff that transports.
So, it's not, it's whoever transports, okay.
But yeah, that would correlate with the conversation we had about the vehicle, and, and that's all reimbursed or paid by the hospital, so.
Yeah, we get.
Money in, money out.
We get reimbursed for that, we, we have not gotten as much as, as he thought in revenue, so he did reduce the amount he's projecting for next year. It's hard the first year when you start that to know.
Yeah.
Which expenses are below two, so I mean, it correlates.
So, the inter-fund reimbursements, that's just the amount that we pay to emergency management?
Yes, and the, and R E C or whatever that is, the.
Oh, that's under that one too?
Yeah, it's the two together. And C R E C or whatever that abbreviation is.
Yeah, I put N R E R C, but I don't know if I'm right or wrong.
Yeah, it says on the.
I think it's more central regional. Wouldn't it be N C R E R C?
N C R E R C, yep.
Yeah.
And that's, that amount is the same as last year, yeah.
That amount's twelve thousand.
Twelve, one fifty-eight, ninety-six, ninety-six.
So, twelve one fifty-nine, kinda.
Yep.
Yeah, some of these are just kinda, really no discussion about it.
No, the second page is mostly the allocations that they've requested. And then, um, the bottom of page two, you'll notice there's nothing in the T I P payments for um, City of Tycoke or Gold Eagle, and that's because that ten years is done. So, all of those ones now come to the counter. So, page three at the top has what that amount would be plus with the wind turbines.
So, yeah, almost five, five hundred, well, five thirty-six, five thirty-seven.
What are the amounts that we owe on those previous loans, Sammy, do you know?
Yeah, let me pull up that worksheet.
So, the original three hundred thousand was paid. That, that was the very first one that we did.
Yeah, um.
If that ten years is up, we probably should be done with that loan.
We will be done with that one this year.
Okay.
Um.
How much is that right now?
We've paid, well, that's without what we are collecting now this year, so this year we should be done with it. Um, so, right now, before any figures that we've received in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're at two forty-seven, seven forty-eight, twenty-six. So, just a little over fifty thousand, which will, this year's will take care of that, I think. Um, and then.
And then there must have been another four hundred thousand dollar one?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, four fifty-seven five was the second one. So, remaining without twenty-four, twenty-five, we have five oh nine, seven fifty-one, seventy-four left to pay.
So, that would all be paid this year. You said five oh, five oh nine?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be paid this year, yeah.
We'll have.
It won't pay much on our million dollars, but.
No, we'd have about twenty-five thousand left over, and then the million would be all we're talking for the following years. And that will probably double or maybe a little more than double next year, so.
Yeah, cause some of the wind mail, some of the windmills aren't even online yet, so, um, that'll happen next year.
And. And that's from the lead yard project, if I remember right, so, and those were higher value because those were bigger, um, higher net acquisition costs and stuff, so. That will substantially change that figure, plus the ones before will add another five percent, so. That por- part, portion of it will double, and the others will add on top of that, so it should more than double next year. So, really, we only have, we have this year, but then for the debt last year, we were only really borrowed kind of one year in advance.
The rest of that page is pretty self-explanatory. Page four.
This is the first year that we're gonna give to North Door the healthy partners?
Yeah, last year was the, I guess they'd requested before, I don't remember them, but last year they came in and then they didn't give them any money last year. They asked to be on our list and came in again this year, and that's what they've requested, so.
For the L A T C F funds, if I remember right, that was a hundred thousand, did we spend?
Yep, it's all gone, it's all gone.
Okay. Did the rest go to the election iPads? Okay.
I'm looking at the top of page four. That ninety-nine oh three-two blank. It's got Nikon Public Transit, but it's listed as paramedic.
That's probably just the c- object code number that's, it's under, see, we have special code numbers, we have the object numbers we have to use. And that's probably the object number that that's under, that's been there since way before me, so.
Okay, it was just a little confusing why.
Yeah, it's not, it's not actually.
I know.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
That's kinda one of those things I just remember when I was in there, you never knew, they never told you. You just budgeted because and hoped that you weren't.
Yeah, yeah.
Over, cause they don't tell you until it's too late.
Yeah.
Well, cause that's approved at the, the rates for the New Year's approved at the spring conference, which is in March, and our budgets are done by that point, so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, they might have a proposal earlier, but it's not actually voted on.
I mean, I don't, on page four, I don't see anything that's, that's troublesome.
I tourism, it's up on, it's not a big deal, but a hundred and sixty-six percent? Is there a reason that I forgot?
So, the last, the last two years, we did not pay the five hundred dollars towards Western Iowa Tourism. We didn't feel like we really got a whole lot out of that, but we had paid that previously, so. I don't know, it's.
It's five hundred dollars, I say we do it. Honestly, because it does list us, I mean, we are, we're, we're being represented. I mean, five hundred bucks isn't that much, you know, we are being represented in that. I'd like to see the five hundred, you know, stay in there, but.
And then at the bottom of the page is the capital projects that Doug was talking about earlier, the one point three.
And that's tied to the T I P?
Yes.
That's where the.
The, the one million is the amount we already transferred that we did earlier, and then the three hundred thousand is what's left in the fund.
Okay.
Or part, it's, yeah, there's more than that in there, but that's part of it. On page five, I am gonna have to talk to Doug about, um, the eight one two ninety-nine. The one thousand, eleven thousand, and then the four hundred, not the four hundred, because he has in there three hundred thousand and twenty-five hundred. But in his revenue, he has different amounts, so, of course, transfers in and transfers out have to match, so. I have to get with him and figure out which number he wants in there, in his budget, he has revenues, hold on.
It looks like they're just on this one.
Um.
Down in both.
Yeah, on both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause he has three hundred, seven twenty-eight, and two five, three six, two oh nine, so. Um, I'm guessing that's the amounts that he wants, so just have to make those changes if that's what he wants.
Yeah, so that's our reward, is that?
Yeah. And then, does your capital projects on the top of page five have fifty thousand dollars in it?
No.
No.
It, it should, I, we, I think Doug had me add that back in, so.
And what's that for?
I don't. Operating transfers for capital projects, let me see if it says on his budget what that is. Hold on.
That's gonna raise the total by fifty thousand dollars too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what that's called, chores, or what it's for.
Yeah, who is that for? We did it in twenty-three, twenty-four, the budget was a hundred thousand, nothing was used.
Yeah, and I, I'm not seeing it in his.
Twenty-nine, twenty-three, we used one ninety-two, and I don't know if that would have been. Cause that wouldn't have been like the courthouse roof or anything, would it have been?
Maybe that is courthouse, maybe that's why I'm not finding it here, hold on, let me go back to courthouse.
Oh.
I bet it is courthouse.
It was, we were saving for the, yes, and then it got paid for with ARPA money, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's. Yeah, so that's, that's why that's in there, it wasn't Doug, it was me.
Okay.
But put it in there, so.
Did you put that in for the parking lot in the back?
No.
For the, the fifty?
It was just, you guys wanted it to add to the fund.
We were saving, yeah.
Yep.
But we, so we don't, we don't need a number in there, is that what we're saying?
Oh, no, there is fifty thousand in there.
Oh, we do wanna budget fifty thousand.
Well, I thought that's what you had told me, but.
If it's for the parking lot, I thought we could talk about holding off on that, but, um.
Well, see, here's the thing. Operating transfers in and out have to be the same.
Yep.
So, if I don't put anything in there, then I'm off fifty thousand dollars, doesn't mean you have to use it. But it, it, it will look like I'm off fifty thousand dollars. Because the operating transfers in and out have to be the same. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, I just can't figure out where the other part is to make it balance.
It's, let me see.
Would that be in the courthouse budget?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking right now.
So, that, the other way to make it balance would be to take that off, right?
Then you wouldn't have the fifty thousand dollars going into that fund.
Yep.
We need it to go in there.
I don't know.
Is that when we talked about, like, if I said if there's excess money, we could?
I think so, but now I can't remember where that was.
Yeah.
That it was in courthouse budget?
I think it was the courthouse, I think it was talking about the, the pavement, the parking lot.
But I don't see it, I don't see it in here though.
Well, I mean, how shattering is it to do that parking lot right now?
It is.
Okay, so then I say, take it off.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
If it's not like. If it's not like urgent.
I still have to find out where it's at.
Last year, Willie and Ron just came to the board and saying if we wanted to prepare for another major project, that would be the next one in mind, but if it wasn't like it had to be done next year, and then.
Yeah, I don't, I think we took that out on the courthouse side of things.
But I don't, I can't find it in there.
I don't, I don't know that we ever had it.
The only thing I can see is the building and curricula, which is at thirty thousand, the.
Well, we always put that in there.
Yeah, we always put that in there.
Well, we've had fifty.
See, it's gonna have to be on the revenue side.
Yeah.
That we're looking for it, because that's where it doesn't match, it's the, whatever we put fifty thousand in. Revenue, I'll look for it and I'll find it, sorry.
Um, I did not change anything on the revenue, and there's everything on the expenses, so, if you wanna get those in there.
Okay. Alright. I can, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we going to use that fifty thousand that's in there for this year? Two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five, there's fifty thousand in there.
Where did you find that at, Amber?
Well, I mean.
Just looking on the same line.
In non-departmental, just right next to it, is.
Maybe that's where it is.
I mean, if we're not gonna use that.
Maybe it's a non-departmental revenue.
It probably is, I mean, that.
That would explain why I can't find it.
No, I don't see it.
There, it is the bottom of page thirteen under revenue, right?
Yeah.
Yep, that's the same line, yeah.
Okay, so we were transferring fifty thousand from the general basic to the thirty-one thousand fund.
Yeah.
And we're talking about doing that again this year.
Yeah.
I mean, well, the year we're on right now.
Yeah.
There's fifty thousand in there. Are we gonna do that?
Well, we probably, cause what's our balance for that right now, can we s- find that?
Yep.
I mean, we just did a couple big major things, but keeping up, trying to keep everything level and playing for the future, probably wouldn't hurt to keep adding to that consistently.
But is that light used for?
Like, primarily building improvements and repairs.
Well, it's estimated.
Cause like, yeah, we were gonna do the growth and stuff out there, and then we used ARPA funds for some of it.
Okay.
We're estimated at the end of this year to be at seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve, with the fifty thousand for next year's estimated one twenty-five, seven, twelve.
That would get the.
Probably wouldn't be bad to keep it in there then.
If you possibly get the paper done on parking lot.
Yeah, but if something else major comes up that we weren't expecting, we'd blow through that pretty quick.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whether it's the boilers or something like that, I mean, if we had, if we had a major thing that failed out of the loop, that's not a huge
It's kind of a.
pot to.
It's kind of almost a wash in some respects, like, say, you know, you always budget for like contingency and stuff, and like the general fund for the courthouse and stuff, and you don't always spend that, or the, you know, building your hair, you don't always spend that, so it's going back in the
General.
General fund anyway, so it's kind of almost probably a wash at the end.
Yep, it would just be out.
It's just now, it's just kinda designated for something big.
Yep.
Yeah. So leave it?
Yeah, I guess.
Probably, I, yeah, probably put fifty in there for twenty-five twenty-six.
Alright. Okay.
Is anybody talking? I can't hear anything.
Unusually, no, nobody's talking.
You have missed a lot, others.
We were waiting for you. Now, we're flipping through non-departmental right now, um.
Okay, it does come in and out, in and out fairly frequently.
I bet that's your internet down there.
Probably.
Good old Laverne.
My my dish off on the stand by the garage, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say the internet in here is probably fairly stable, so I bet you that's on your end.
Yeah.
So I have a question on the revenue.
Mm-hmm.
On page four.
Hold on, one second.
No, it was on page three two.
Revenue, page four. Okay.
So like, oh no, that is not, nevermind, I I'm looking at it, the, I was looking at the um. Where is I, yeah, the homestead, like the homestead stuff, like, we've only received seventeen thousand. And we're budgeting sixty-one thousand. It did something change with that? Why we're, are we gonna get more money now?
Yeah, because of the sixty-five and sixty-five and over credit, yes, we'll be getting more, it's almost doubled.
Okay.
Um, but some of the others are less.
Okay.
And military is no longer.
Really?
Because that that's combined, homestead and military is together now, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah, cause general basic and general supplemental both went out quite a bit. Which is.
Which is good for actually, you know.
Yeah. Oh yeah, page eight, that's where all the military ones are blanked out.
Yeah.
Or full option sales tax expecting a sixteen percent increase is good if it comes to fruition.
Yeah, that's another one of those that's hard.
Why does my computer always make that noise?
Cause you're getting an email?
No.
Why not?
It sounds like the notification sound, is there anything on a bar right?
Oh, you know what, it's not you.
I think it's me.
It's the owl up here that makes the noise.
Oh, yeah, if it's.
Oh.
If Tammy's getting an email, it's coming through.
Yeah, cause that's the, that works as a speaker too, so.
And even though my sound is turned off on my computer, it still does it.
Yeah.
Okay, so am I, is it on my computer that's doing it, or is it up there?
Oh, it's.
It's that owl.
It's owl, okay, I kept thinking it was my computer.
Did you just get an email, Tammy?
Uh, something, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's your notifications, I'm probably, mine will do the same.
Okay. I always wonder, I'm like, what did I miss?
So you, you were talking about the local option, sales tax going up sixteen percent, who 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 plugs in that number?
I do.
You just, direction from somebody, or?
Yeah, we go based on. Basically what they, what we've received this year.
Okay.
You can go on to the Iowa Department of Revenue and. Have a spreadsheet.
Do they have an estimate for that, for next year?
No, we base it off of what we've received, what we're receiving. This year.
Wait, that it comes true.
Yes.
Carter, you got any questions flipping through this, or you tagging along?
I actually don't have the budget sheets.
Oh, you have your binder in here, okay, yeah.
I do.
Yep. Tammy, for the bottom of page fourteen, for self insurance, do we have a number for that at all yet?
No, let me look.
And this would be on the revenue side?
I don't think he gave me a number, but let me look, click, hold on. That would help if I meant revenue. No. Oh yeah, it's. Two eight four three seven hundred.
And that would be our contribution towards the self insurance fund?
Mm-hmm, that'd be the revenue coming into the fund, yes.
Any other questions over there? Are you plugging in the numbers Doug brought up, Tammy?
Trying.
Yeah, just a second, too good.
Is the mileage rate affected January one or July one?
January.
So you go off of what?
Yeah.
And what was it?
Seventy.
Seventy cents.
I got one. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Uh, she must be.
Can't read his handwriting.
Oh.
I put seventy-five instead of twenty-five.
For tonight, have we received any other papers or anything, or is it what they're gonna give us tonight, or?
I don't think I see anything else.
Carter, you got anything else for meeting tonight? I don't, um. I I guess I didn't even.
Do you need this ones that you just gave me?
Sure, please.
You're welcome. I'm trying to print it.
Howard, did you happen to get this from the treasurer today? This came from Connie, yeah. So when we talk about funds, like secondary road fund, here's that line there, and the transfer station fund is on that, capital projects, there's, I think there's two lines of capital projects, that is the TIF stuff, get paid back, and self-insurance fund, that's, when I talk about the funds, that's the ones I'm talking about there, so...
So that was today?
I received this from Connie this morning, I think, so...
Yeah, Nick might have been semi, that's what this is, the front sheet is semi annual report is what this, so Connie may have just emailed it. I don't know, I did get an email from Nick.
Or it was in the, it was in the, it wasn't an email, it was in the...
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Howard, did you happen to get this from the treasurer today?
I did, I did.
This came from Connie, yeah. So when we talk about funds, like secondary road fund, here's that line there, and the transfer station fund is on that, capital projects, there's, I think there's two lines of capital projects, that is the TIF stuff, get paid back, and self-insurance fund, that's, when I talk about the funds, that's the ones I'm talking about there, so...
So that was today?
I received this from Connie this morning, I think, so... Yeah, Nick might have been semi, that's what this is, the front sheet is semi annual report is what this, so Connie may have just emailed it.
I don't know, I did get an email from Nick.
Or it was in the, it was in the, it wasn't an email, it was in the...
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, you ready Doug, or?
I'm gonna go to my workbook here quick, if you just give me a couple minutes.
Or do you stick it in here and find that kind of...
No, I haven't opened it. Roger said he left stuff in there, I don't wanna open it.
He did.
I shoved it way to the back.
I just have to organize. I didn't organize that basket since you're on your left, so that's gotta get, I'm sure it's in there somewhere.
Here's that, or you meant it tucked in your drawer?
He didn't, I looked there already.
Maybe Howard took them.
Absolutely, yeah.
He said I need two copies.
He wants more paper.
He's been begging for more paper all day.
All right. All right, so, okay, go through all of this here, um, and on page one of the expenditures, the first part is administration, uh, half of the salary of the county engineer goes to administration, um, after taking a four percent increase. My calculations show, um, these amounts here, and on the reverse side is the, uh, scale that I refer to for, uh, employees. So you can see what, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, that's the left portion, what, uh, their wages or what their salaries were, and then using four percent increase, what, uh, that ends up being, there are some changes in scales. Transportation engineer in training, if you look at the batch sheet, try to make that somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to sixty percent of the county engineer's, uh, salary, uh, transportation engineer two, that's somebody that is licensed to practice, uh, engineering in the state of Iowa, we try to make that somewhere fifty-five percent to seventy percent of the county engineer's salary. A transportation engineer three, uh, which is a licensed engineer and, uh, chief assistant county engineer, we make that somewhere seventy to eighty-five percent, uh, of the county engineer's salary. Technicians, uh, one, two, and three, depending on, uh, how much certifications a person has and their ability to, uh, inspect things, but we can, uh, go forty to fifty percent for technician one. Uh, once they start getting some of their inspection certifications, we go to technician two, and that's fifty to sixty percent, and technician three is a licensed land surveyor, and we go fifty-five to seventy percent similar to what a professional engineer gives. Engineering aid, uh, that would be somebody entry level inspection, um, salary is not applicable, but you can see the pay rate, uh, there, we pay by the hour, and engineering two, again, uh, start getting some certificates, start getting some, uh, different certifications, uh, twenty-four, fourteen to twenty-six, twenty-seven an hour, and engineering aid, uh, three, sort of a party chief, um, assistant to the engineer is somewhere forty-five percent to fifty-three percent, um, so, and then the office manager, uh, with a step scale somewhere between thirty-four to forty-six percent of the county engineer's, um, salary, and again, I, I would really like that to be similar to, uh, uh, somebody, a deputy in elected office on the second floor here of the courthouse. So with that, there's, uh, salaries, and I'll go ahead and start going through the budget. Uh, half of the salary for the county engineer is that first line, seventy-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Uh, the clerk, the engineers, office managers, fifty-seven thousand two hundred, uh, FICA for those positions are estimated ten thousand dollars, IFRS twelve thousand five hundred, uh, health insurance forty-three thousand, life insurance two hundred fifty, and engineering supplies and services six thousand. So that's a total of two hundred two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars budgeted for administration, engineering.
Can, if we can go back to page one, health insurance, you got a twenty-eight percent increase there, can you explain that?
I, I have a sheet of labor. The county contribution ends up being... I use twenty-three fifty, I shouldn't use twenty-one hundred.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to go back and reduce this stuff.
You're talking about thousands there, or a month, per month?
No, I put in per month.
Twenty-three fifty.
Two thousand three hundred fifty dollars, and it should have been twenty-one hundred. I did, I was hurried, hurried on that, so I need to change that, so, um, those figures will be reduced, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine, I just remembered, but I had to double check.
I need, I gotta double check everything anyway, so... So the second page then. Uh, officer salaries, this would be, uh, again, my, the, the other half of my salary, seventy-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars. For the, uh, assistant engineers, um, their salaries add up to be two hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Uh, other help, uh, which is, we do have one, um, assistant to the engineer, and any summer help that we would have, I budgeted eighty thousand dollars. FICA comes up to be thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, IFRS is forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Health insurance, which is going to be less, but it's budgeted at one hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Life insurance, seven hundred fifty, and then engineering supplies and services, a hundred thirty thousand. We do have bridge inspection coming up this year, so I've increased that number just a little bit to pay consultant for inspecting half of our bridges. Then going on to page three and the bridges and culverts, um, the, this wage for our road department that I'm estimating for maintenance on bridges and culverts is fifty-five thousand dollars. Using that figure, FICA is four thousand two hundred, IFRS is five thousand two hundred. Health insurance, which is kind of a, I gotta kind of look at these thousands of dollars that are, are budgeted and try to make sure that everything adds up, but that's twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, again, that will change when I put some figures into my workbook. Life insurance is a hundred and fifty dollars, and then supplies and services for maintenance of culverts and roads, a hundred thirty thousand dollars. If you look at the batch sheet. Try to make that somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to sixty percent of the county engineer's salary. Transportation engineer two, that's somebody that is licensed to practice engineering in the state of Iowa. We try to make that somewhere fifty-five percent to seventy percent of the county engineer's salary. Transportation engineer three. Which is a licensed engineer and chief assistant county engineer. We make that somewhere seventy to eighty-five percent of the county engineer's salary. Technicians one, two, and three, depending on how much certifications a person has and their ability to inspect things. But we can go forty to fifty percent for technician one. Once they start getting some of their inspection certifications, we go to technician two. And that's fifty to sixty percent. And technician three is a licensed land surveyor and we go fifty-five to seventy percent similar to what a professional engineer gives. Engineering aid. That would be somebody entry level inspection. Salary is not applicable, but you can see the pay rate there. We pay by the hour. And engineering two, again, start getting some certificates, start getting some different certifications. Twenty-four, fourteen to twenty-six, twenty-seven an hour in engineering aid. Three, sort of a party chief assistant to the engineer is somewhere forty-five percent to fifty-three percent. So, and then the office manager. With a step scale somewhere between thirty-four to forty-six percent of the county engineer's salary. And again, I would really like that to be similar to. Somebody, a deputy in elected office on the second floor here of the courthouse. So with that, there's salaries and I'll go ahead and start going through the budget. Half of the salary for the county engineer is that first line seventy-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars. The clerk, the engineers, office managers fifty-seven thousand two hundred. FICA for those positions estimated ten thousand dollars. Ipers twelve thousand five hundred. Health insurance forty-three thousand. Life insurance two hundred fifty. And engineering supplies and services six thousand. So that's a total of two hundred two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars budgeted for administration. Engineering.
Can, if we can go back to page one, health insurance, you got a twenty-eight percent increase there? Can you explain that?
I, I have a sheet of labor. The county contribution ends up being. I used twenty-three fifty. I shouldn't have used twenty-one hundred.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to go back and reduce.
You talking about thousands there or per month?
No, I put in. Per month.
Twenty-three fifty.
Two thousand three hundred fifty dollars and it should have been twenty-one hundred. I did, I was hurried, hurried on that, so I need to change that, so. Those figures will be reduced. I apologize.
Oh, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that.
I need, I gotta double check everything anyway, so. So the second page then. Officer salaries, this would be, again, my, the other half of my salary seventy-three thousand eight hundred forty dollars. For the assistant engineers. Their salaries add up to be two hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Other help, which is, we do have one assistant to the engineer. And any summer help that we would have, I budgeted eighty thousand dollars. FICA comes up to be thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Ipers is forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Health insurance, which is going to be less, but it's budgeted at one hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Life insurance seven hundred fifty. And then engineering supplies and services a hundred thirty thousand. We do have bridge inspection coming up this year, so I've increased that number just a little bit to pay consultant for inspecting half of our bridges. Then going on to page three and the bridges and culverts. The wage for our road department that I'm estimating for maintenance on bridges and culverts is fifty-five thousand dollars. Using that figure, FICA is four thousand two hundred. Ipers is five thousand two hundred. Health insurance, which is kind of a, I gotta kind of look at these thousands of dollars that are budgeted and try to make sure that everything adds up, but that's twenty-four thousand dollars. Again, that will change when I put some figures into my workbook. Life insurance is a hundred and fifty dollars. And then supplies and services for maintenance of culverts and roads, a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Roads, wages are estimated to be one million four hundred twenty thousand dollars. FICA for that is one hundred nine thousand. Ipers is one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred. Health insurance six hundred twenty thousand. Life insurance three thousand seven hundred. Engineering supplies, blood sheet, Tammy. Life insurance three thousand seven hundred dollars. And supplies and services for road maintenance, paved and gravel roads, two million dollars even. Snow and ice control, I budgeted two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. We've used very little of it so far, which is nice. FICA for that is eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty. Snow, Ipers twenty-three thousand. Health insurance a hundred thousand. Life insurance six hundred. And engineering supplies and services, sand and salt and other materials used for maintenance of snow removal, ice removal, thirty thousand dollars.
May I interrupt you there?
Sure.
I'm sure this is a ridiculous question, but the help at two hundred forty-five thousand, that's just a certain percentage of the total? It's not extra, it's not extra help or?
I look at five-year, five-year averages. For that, and over five years.
Not sure you answered the question.
It is a piece of the full-time staff.
Yeah, it's a full-time staff. This is, this would not be any.
So there's no?
We don't have part-time snow removal.
Okay, that was probably my question and then it's really, there's no savings on that line if it doesn't snow or ice all year long? If the people are still there?
They work yes. They're, they're, we have people cut and brush.
Sure, sure. I'm not saying they're not busy, I mean.
But yeah, it would go to a different, a different account.
Okay, you charge it off to a different account. Okay.
So, just depending on what they're doing. Alright, so snow and ice control. I think we're through that one. Traffic controls, eighty thousand dollars for our, our wages. FICA contribution six thousand one hundred. Ipers contribution seven thousand five hundred. Health insurance thirty-five thousand. Life insurance two hundred. Engineering supplies and services, I budgeted a hundred seventy-five thousand. I am gonna try to get some of our stop signs replaced. There is a, some grants available. So I'm gonna try to get some regulatory and warning signs replaced that have, are in need of it. That we've identified with that. And road clearing, this would be right-of-way work. Budgeted a hundred ten thousand of our own wages. FICA is eight thousand four hundred. Ipers is ten thousand four hundred. Health insurance forty-eight thousand. Life insurance two hundred fifty. And then a hundred twenty-five thousand, this would be for spraying of our road ditches of different chemicals. New equipment, I budgeted two million dollars for new equipment. We have. A number of. Maintainers that have over ten thousand hours on them. Trucks the same way. We have a snow blower, two snow blowers that are like eighty-two and eighty-three. We need to get our equipment back up. We have some, we've just gotta do that, so I budgeted two million. Hopefully we could get some money spent this year, this upcoming year. Equipment operations, two hundred eighty thousand dollars budgeted for wages. At the candy shop, FICA would be twenty-one thousand seven hundred fifty. Ipers twenty-seven thousand. Health insurance a hundred twenty thousand. Life insurance seven hundred fifty. Supplies and services would be two million one hundred thousand one hundred dollars. That's includes all of the electricity utilities for all of the shops. That number there as well as. Fuel, grease, all the parts for, for all the equipment. Tools, fifty thousand dollars budgeted in that. Real estate and buildings, two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that. Roadway construction, I put a million dollars in that. I know there's six hundred fifty are sold that's already obligated. I don't know if any of that money will get spent out of this fiscal year. So we know, I know we need money in that. And if we would have some other small restructuring projects, once I start putting the program together, I will add some money to that as well. So that gives. A total of twelve million three hundred twenty thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars. I will, that will go down some with the difference in family policy of expenses. And then revenues. Land, this would be gravel pits that, Cassuth County Secondary Road Department home that we rent for farmland. Budgeting thirty thousand dollars for the next fiscal year. Sales of fixed assets, if we can get some of these new trucks. I'd like to start getting rid of some of our old equipment, some of our old trucks. Hopefully we can get fifteen thousand dollars for those fixed assets. Road use taxes, I expect to receive six million seven hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred forty-four dollars from road use taxes to the road department. The secondary road fund. Farm-to-market extension funds, which is dollars. We are responsible for roads in towns with population. Farm-to-market roads within towns with population less than five hundred. That amounts to about sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-two thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars worth of funds. Drainage district repairs, I budgeted thirty thousand revenue for that. Snow removal, we do have a couple of twenty E agreements with some towns to do snow removal. Budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars of revenue for that. Fuel purchases, we provide fuel for sheriff's department. Pretty much every department in the county. So that, we get reimbursed for that and I'm estimating we'll receive somewhere around the neighborhood of a hundred thousand for that. Twenty-one funding is a building went into existence in, oh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Raising some of the registration fees and different fees associated with transportation. Expecting seven hundred fifty thousand four hundred seven dollars from that. Moving permits, oversized vehicles twenty thousand. And then there's also moving permit, which is the all-system permit. Thinking that we'll get about twenty-five thousand dollars from that fee. Copy fees, five hundred dollars budgeted. Driveway construction, seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for revenue. Sale of some secondary road materials every now and then. We have road materials that get sold to somebody for a certain reason. Budgeting twenty-five hundred dollars for that. Sale of salvage, all of our iron and material that can be salvaged. Approximately budget of five thousand dollars for that. Miscellaneous, fifteen thousand budgeted. Fuel dividends from our fuel suppliers, budgeted two thousand dollars for that. Utilities from some of the electric bills, refund of electrics, estimated a thousand dollars. And general basic, which I handed to the board earlier, three hundred thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. General basic funds. Rural services, two million five hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred nine dollars. And local option sales tax of one million dollars for revenue. And that total revenue is eleven million six hundred ninety-six thousand sixty-one dollars.
Doug, when you have your figure for road and bridge construction, is that just using the TIF funds or?
That's not using any.
That's not using any of that?
No. That would come out of the capital projects fund.
For your scheduled equipment that you wanna replace with that two million dollars, what do you have on the list there?
I'm sorry, I don't know where that sheet is at right now. And I do not have.
Have you wanted to email it out to us later?
No, I'll quickly do quick. We have one, two, three, four, five motor graders that are over ten thousand hours. We have. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten motor graders that are over twenty years old.
That's like a twenty-eight total? Is that, does that cover?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's. We have a nineteen eighty-two and a nineteen eighty-four snow glow, snow go, snow blower, which are very difficult to find parts for. And I'd like to get one of those replaced. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine trucks that are two thousand five and earlier than over twenty years old. Four of those should be coming out, so about five trucks. Five trucks, not quarter, but a million dollars each by the time it gets all of the snow equipment and dump accessories on. Motor graders are somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand. Last time I checked, if I remember right, the. Snow blower was about three hundred fifty thousand. We also have some trailers, our low-boy trailer right now is. A two thousand five is worn. And we got a couple of other tag trailers that are worn. Low-boy trailer I think is gonna be right around a hundred thousand. The tag trailer is right in that forty thousand dollar.
Terrible.
What's that?
Terrible. It is what it is, I know.
Part of. Part of the operation. And really we got a couple of belly dump trailers too that we're using. Two thousand five, two thousand nine, which they're very important. With most of our gravel in the southern portion of Cassuth County, getting that gravel up to the north end. Using a semi-tractor, belly dump trailer instead of one dump truck. Get twice as much, not twice as much, but get, get more volume of aggregate on there.
I shouldn't ask, but so you, you were talking about some of those trailers, you're talking about puff trailers behind the dump truck. What makes you, when do you, when, what terms are made of those you want? Are they only set up for certain trucks or any truck?
All, all of our trucks are pretty much set up with a hitch and load that we're buying, yeah.
How many of those do you have?
Well, we got a couple of tags that we need to get rid of, but we. Probably need in the neighborhood of four. They are, I guess, they're, they would be smaller than what we just purchased. The ones we just purchased are for heavier loads, they probably wouldn't have to be as large. I didn't, so.
I'm just guessing.
We also have pop trailers, three of them are over twenty years old, so.
So if you replace, I, I know, this, this is almost last rule, if you replaced everything that's over twenty years old, would it add up to ten million dollars?
I'd have to, I don't know. I'd have to, I don't know.
A lot maybe.
Yeah. Some of the things we don't use every day, might have some low hours on it, but it's, I see. We got nineteen ninety-two trailers, I'm just looking at ninety, trailers, ninety-two, eighty-nine, eighty-six. Some of those we made ourselves. They're more of, you know, just something to haul, some small, either pipe or something more just of maintenance. We've got two pickups that are two thousand six and two thousand three pickup. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight pickups have over a hundred thousand, we got one pickup with over two hundred thousand miles on it. We, when we, when we trade our stuff in or when we sell our stuff, it's, it's been used, we don't do it every five years or anything like that.
Any more questions? You guys got any questions?
Carter, you got anything?
He doesn't have anything.
Nope, not at the moment. Did, I was gone, of course, for a portion of the meeting earlier. Did you discuss mechanics or road workers or any of that for wages?
We did, but I think it was the consensus that we're gonna wait until the next, um.
Negotiation.
There you go, thank you, the next negotiation, yeah.
Oh, okay. Which would be next year then, yep? Okay.
This part, the one we're looking on, yeah.
Just fall, right? Cause this was on the last year.
Right. Okay.
I got nothing else. Okay, thank you.
I have all the new numbers entered for non-departmental, do you want me to print those off?
Is there gonna be any adjustments after you just those numbers for the self-insurance?
I, I, those are in already.
No, that, that'd be a different budget.
That's a different budget.
Different, okay.
Self-insure, that's self-insurance, yes, it is in non-departmental, but it's between, I mean, it's already in there, cause it's printed on self-insurance.
Okay, okay.
And they're, yeah, they're already in there.
Sure.
Okay.
Carry their way.
I, well, I'd rather have the current sheets if we're gonna, I mean, if we're gonna go to the trouble.
I agree. We might as well be looking at what's the latest.
Yeah. And then are we just gonna start going through and doing some revisiting or?
Yeah, and remember, I haven't updated the insurance amounts on each person's budget yet.
Right.
But that should be the only change that we're waiting on. Maybe we need a printer in here.
Oh, we got one on the other side of the wall there.
Yeah, I mean, we can print to that.
Until Derek starts charging us for it.
I have sheets of self-insurance here on non-departmental, so, and I also have the same. So this one's, I just scratched that, I was like, yeah, I use by that every time I open it up.
Can I say that? The one you're looking at, non-departmental?
Yeah, mine's right.
Oh, that's okay.
We need sheets for Phil.
Yeah, I would think you should have put that in mine, but.
Yeah, by code it's supposed to be like fifteenth.
Fifteenth of what?
January.
What do you mean by code?
By code, it's supposed to be to be after, or by fifteen, all department sheets. Not like it's a big deal, but we should have it.
Who are we missing?
Phil.
Well, we're not missing, he submitted a budget, but just didn't submit it on the worksheets. You know, that are in our binder.
And it may be, Tammy may have it entered, just been printed.
Yeah, just have it printed.
Yeah.
We just don't have it.
I think you guys were going through the, some of the discretionary or non-departmental, non-departmental things earlier. What did we end up deciding to do with that healthy harvest of North Iowa that came in?
Uh, no one's really said much about it, so I think we'll just leave it for now.
What do you guys think?
Leave it as requested or leave it as no?
Leave it as requested. I mean, it's in there.
I, I just didn't know, know what, what he did with that.
We didn't change it.
Okay. Was any of the other discretionary items changed or don't?
No.
No.
Did, was, was there any that you wanted to go over?
Um, not necessarily. I was just curious.
Are you okay with leaving them? All, you're leaving them as?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I support what they do and everything, I just didn't know what, what we were gonna do budgetary wise, but.
It's not a hu- huge dollar amount.
No, no.
Expense and revenue.
Hey.
Hello.
Ooh, nice and warm.
Expense and revenue for non-departmental.
Did you hear that, Carter, you're gonna have more papers?
You got a couple trees.
Oh, joy.
There's still not, Albert.
I did what?
Go right to the, where it starts and started.
I'm sure I understand what that means, that's okay.
The page, the number of pages. Did I do that, put it up for myself? Did I give Carter some? No, I guess Carter, he doesn't get one today.
I guess you don't get more papers yet.
I think you got plenty of time to print it out, who's not here? What was the last thing we were talking with Carter about? What, what line was that?
Uh, it is. Non-programmed page.
I see elder brooch.
Page three, right at the bottom, second one from the bottom. Other non-program current food.
That's such a weird amount.
I don't remember what they said they base that off of.
It's done per capita.
I was thinking population, yeah. Is there anything else to go on through today or call in our day or?
Well, I think we should start revisiting some. I know it doesn't have the health insurance for burden, but we already know what, you know, what that's going to be, we've discussed it, so. Tammy, did you get sheets for the ambulance from Phil? Did he get his filled out?
Yes, did I not put them in there?
Well, I don't have them, but. I looked at mine, I just had his papers, but.
Yeah, I don't have them in mine either. Yes, he did do that. Let me, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Who do we have left yet today?
Uh, that's all that we have, we're just gonna go back and review some.
Okay.
I'll need to leave it on the floor probably, if not before. Garbage.
I like.
Garbage.
Oh, this is the same place then?
Is there a recycling?
No, I don't.
We have it in our office, but not in here.
Not in here, there's not.
When they, when they go to dump the garbage, sometimes they separate that out. Which they might, because it involves the senior's paper.
Yeah, a lot of it is paper. She print that off for you, did you print that off?
Um, I asked him to print it off for me.
So tonight, while we're waiting tonight, this is, this meeting's about the assessor. And it's the third county, third cities, and third schools. And there is no, there's no power trip, everybody's equally blessed, they come to a, come to a mutual agreements.
And, yeah, it kind of depends on how it's, well, how the conversation goes. Sometimes we can split up into our groups, so it's be a district supervisor will talk, and city mayor will talk, and school boards will talk, but you each have one vote as a unit, so if it was a split three to two vote between the board, the majority of the supervisors equals one vote.
Right, so there's three votes?
Three votes total.
And what are you, and what are you voting on compensation and?
The assessor's position.
Are we only doing the position, we're not doing anything with the budget?
Budget hearing is not until.
Like a workshop.
Yeah, we're doing a workshop tonight, but then we'll be doing a budget hearing, um.
That'll be separate.
But that's just basically, everything's already said, is that all right? I mean, so tonight is when the numbers get decided.
Other than, other than potential wages, if we, you know, decide to change the wages, adjust the wages, that'd be the only thing really that I think would be different.
You can only adjust down after it's published, you can't adjust up after it's published, so.
Everybody in that office gets the same health insurance as the rest of you. Don't count the answers, there's transfers, would be transfers in for all that from these other entities?
For the health insurance, you mean?
Health insurance, heat, lights.
Um, not for these.
No, it's, they have their own levy. The assessor's internal levy, so that's how that's paid.
But they do pay their health insurance into our self-insurance fund, so that, that would kind of be transferred, yeah. Depends on what term you put on it.
Yeah, the assessor's office is pretty unique in that.
There's everybody's unique in some aspect or another, I'd say.
Kinda, yeah. Yeah. When you think you have a plan, it's like, oh, well, we can't do it that way because.
Everybody's unique except the other ninety-nine counties at all, or the other ninety-eight counties at all, the same thing.
Well, hello.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Is it warm enough out there?
Oh, it's horrible, I'm over it today. Take care.
You too.
Temperature's supposed to steadily go up as the evening goes on.
Sorry, I ran out of paper.
I wonder why.
Have to go chop down a tree out in the parking lot to build them. Sure Willie would be all right with that, less squirrels to deal with.
Run out of room in the tree or anything?
There's one room.
Dumped to the top of stack.
That's when you start flipping up the other side. Oh, yeah, your rings are smaller.
Yeah. As I say. I definitely have less room up here.
I can tell the rings are real.
Yeah.
I have a question on the, so, on the ambulance, how that's some money for ARPA funds?
So, when does that get budgeted for?
ARPA funds?
Yeah, cause for that resolution, you guys did the thirty-first. Okay.
Now we got.
And maybe I didn't look at the right. And maybe I didn't look at the right line. Okay, I must not look at the right. I was gonna say, did I miss it? Um, shouldn't it be, okay, but shouldn't it be the seven hundred? Shouldn't it be under the American recipe?
It is, that's on page six. I've got a hundred and fifty on page six, uh, second line from the bottom. That's ambulance ARPA, right there.
Ambulance, oh, motor vehicle, so that's the vehicle. Okay, so I was looking at.
Yeah, I hadn't gotten that far.
Okay. So then, is there a line item in general basics somewhere to cover that going into there?
The revenue.
Well, or is it under, or is it out of?
It, it's, it's out of O one thousand, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Using myself over there.
But I am curious. Oh, is he gonna be spending that much where he needs one fifty plus the two sixty?
Well.
No, I think, 'cause I remember him saying that he was gonna adjust that differently for, um.
Moving up to wages, wasn't he?
But he didn't, 'cause this is what he just gave me.
Remember if there's something else that comes out of that line item, I think, what else that might have. Just listed ambulance, but. First line, seventeen percent. Salary?
Yeah.
I don't know. He talked about, when we talked on salaries, I think we got sidetracked a couple times there.
That's a good question.
I don't know. I know he made a comment about asking for an adjustment for his salary, but I don't think he ever finished his thought.
Is he available to come in?
Um, probably not. You could try calling him, but, um, I just.
Even if he can be on the phone even?
Yeah.
Well, I just saw a text from him that, um, there's a medical emergency with some of his family, and he probably wouldn't make the meeting tonight, so. Um, I don't know how available he would be with, with that. He is a representative of school for, for North, is it, North U.
Different position.
Um, yeah, so he would, he would be a representative tonight, but.
Okay, that's fine, I got it. I understand.
Yeah.
Well. Having just killed another tree, it's kinda disappointing, but it's, it's not, uh.
Accurate. Yeah, I don't necessarily proof what they give me. They, I type in what they give me. It's your guys' job to.
Yeah.
Check it out.
Is there anything else from our conversation with him that you guys wanted, I mean, gonna meet him here?
I don't know if I, I wrote down some stuff, but I don't know if it's. Oh, I was just writing down what the wages. Uh, and, 'cause I was asking, well, what's in the MT with the names and to be paramedics? I mean, it'd be nice, I mean, it's hard to try and figure out, you know, like, well, obviously Phil's alone on his line, but like, the deputies, and it'd be nice to know, okay, how much of that is regular time, how much is overtime built in, and.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's hard to decipher, okay, what is, what are we, what are we approving, you know?
Well, he was also on that line, he was also looking to, um, get another guy hired too, is what he was anxious to do. So that, and that's why there was another increase to that.
Right, because he said he's going from what to what?
Well, he's at nine.
Nine to eleven, or he wanted to?
He's told, he wants to get to eleven, but he for sure needs to get a tenth hired, um, but.
And is that something that has to be approved by this board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Tammy, do you know the IPRs rates? Like, what IPR rate would go into these numbers for all the departments?
So.
Yeah, I, I wrote it down from here.
And was the MS included in this, in the changes with law enforcement that did increase?
No. No, it's just the sheriff's office, or just the deputies. Oh, I think it's in here. Okay, so IPRs regular nine point four four, jail nine point three one, sheriff's twelve point zero nine.
Twelve point.
Zero nine. I don't have anything different for ambulance. So I'm just guessing they're at the nine point four four as well.
The counties, the employee side is the same?
No, the county employee is six point two nine.
Yeah.
Um, jail six point two one, and sheriff's office is the same, twelve point zero nine.
Those who are outside of program.
Yes. It would be nice to have a breakdown of the hourly wages that are being asked for, for each of those.
I did write down when he was talking about it, what they currently are.
I have what they are, but it'd be nice to know what's proposed.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree. Do you, do you think it would be okay to try calling him? I mean, if he doesn't answer, that's fine, but.
We could try.
Yeah, I mean, at least maybe get some answers.
Yeah.
That's its number.
Um.
Well, he probably won't be in the office there.
I'll give you a cell phone if you want it. It is five one five. There I do nine.
I did, I didn't take it.
Five one five, three two zero, one five six four.
Luke?
Hey Phil, this is, uh, Josh in the boardroom. We got you on speakerphone here. Uh, did we catch you had a good time?
Oh, not really. What do you need?
Uh, we just had a couple of quick questions, but if you're not available to talk right now, then we can always touch base next week.
That'd be, that'd be great if we could, um, try to remote log and follow, or not, so.
Okay, okay. All right, sounds good. We will talk to you next week then.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, I didn't figure he'd be too available.
No, thanks.
No, but like, what's the reasoning for those increases? Like, when we're being, we're sticking to four percent everywhere else, where it's, I mean.
They weren't clear on those. So I know, I know the other, like, the fourth line there, the other help, that's volunteer, so to speak. I mean, that's part-time people.
Yeah.
That's, that's not a percentage increase. That's increased to hip, to actuals. That's, that's not a percentage.
So it's only those two line items then here that's?
Yeah, the other two would be a question, but I, I don't know what percent he plugged in for a raise on, um, the other ones. I thought we had talked about four percent. I, I don't wanna she get a question with that, like, blank increase for raise. So I think that was waiting for our discussion. Yeah, I mean, that'd be a question for him to answer.
I'm gonna put sticky notes online, sticking out for the ones that we have to revisit.
Yeah, okay. So then, if we just keep going down, like, the annex, um, my note says, that's his budget, no changes, so, I mean. Assessor, we can't really do, I mean, it's.
That'll be discussed tonight, so. Attorney, do the next one. Um, do you know if he got you?
Yes, there.
What was on the list?
What was the question?
They got me the changes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause you gave us the sheets.
Yes.
Did I, no. What's the date on your cases?
I think.
Not yet. That's accurate, okay, okay.
Are the old ones? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I stapled my.
Yeah, I did, I did that too, but.
But I don't really, I don't really have too many notes on there, so I could get rid of those.
I just need to. On his, we did add the revenue line too.
Yeah.
On the back. There was a revenue line for. A legal research program.
Legal research, so Tammy added in the, uh, line.
C A L R.
Yeah.
Anything on that one for discussion? Howard, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Auditor? Over there, guys?
Yep.
Alphabetical or?
Yep.
Well, I think it's easier to keep track of.
So I could've asked this the last time, but I just said, so, so why is the FICA going up more than four percent? Is it where you just put four percent?
With the eighty-five percent. Two of my deputies, I put up to eighty-five percent.
That's the first thing I had for notes. Anybody got any thoughts there?
I know we had discussed it, um, leaving them for this year, at least until we got more solid numbers. Uh, that was where I thought I had left off with my thought anyways, did you guys?
Well, it's not a lot unlike what Doug's, what we asked Doug to do, right? Start at four. See where you go from there, when you, when you have the whole picture.
What do you mean?
Leaving those two deputies at the eighty, instead of increasing them to the eighty-five for now, 'cause they'll still be doing the four percent with the.
Then you're gonna have the other departments do that too then?
Oh, we did.
Yeah, that's.
They didn't change them.
We didn't ask them to change them, like, at the time when they came in, but.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember who else was asking for that.
Yeah.
Who else was?
Treasure, treasure and recorder.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
Well. Doug just won't, you know, you just, we just redid Doug to do that, right? I, I guess, I don't wanna dominate the conversation or anything, or I don't wanna be fully ignorant or, or whatever.
I don't know.
Carter, are you there at all, or any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, regarding the deputies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that we ever did really discuss it, um. They would be getting the four percent like the others, and that, that's correct?
Yes.
Just the change would be they would move to a, an eighty-five percent to purchase an eighty percent of the elected official salary, correct?
Yeah, but by definition, then you'd get the four percent too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, my position would be at this point, everybody's at four percent until you know more, but that's, I, we just had Doug redo it. I realized, I guess we realized when we got to it, I thought, or shoot, I haven't redone yours at all, but, because yours is the original date, I think, right?
Yeah.
The one three.
Yeah, I had a four percent in mind to start.
Okay.
Yeah, some, some went with the four percent bring in and some didn't, but I think that's been the sentiment of the board to have four percent be across the board at this point.
And, and no steps for any deputies?
I don't think so, not at the time.
Yeah, so we'll have a couple others to change too.
I think that treasure and I don't see um deputies are at four percent.
Oh, there's.
There's more than one.
Yeah, there's two.
He has three different departments in his.
Yeah.
And he has just deputies in two range?
Yes.
Okay, I see that now.
Yeah. Yeah, he requested first deputy in tax department, maybe eighty-five. Yeah, I guess to do that across the board, we should probably hold off on any steps percentage wise.
So change again. Okay.
Did you check on Brittany's, why hers is less than?
Yeah, I did, that's what it comes out to, so I don't know why.
It weird.
I know why it's like that, I don't know.
Must be a weird rounding thing.
Yeah.
If you four percent on forty-eight, seven, nineteen, my phone has fifty-six, six, seven point seven six.
Five.
So it looks like it'd be a hundred. Twenty-four.
Yep. Oh, short.
Oh, well.
But, but that forty-eight, seven, nineteen isn't what she makes now, that's not what her wage is right now.
Okay.
That's probably, no.
That's what it lasts for, for fiscal year.
Cause it says, well, twenty-four, twenty-five in the July first wages, it says forty-eight, five, ninety-eight, fifty-three.
Yeah, so right now.
So that's probably why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was in there higher than what.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Not what it needed to be.
Yeah, because that is not her current.
Okay.
Think other than that, I didn't really have. Anything else, anybody got anything else? I gotta step away for a couple minutes, I'll be back. Okay.
You guys wanna go right up to four, or how far do you wanna get?
You got somewhere to be, say so, we'll adjust.
Yeah.
Not the end of the world either way, but.
Plot book fees, we dropped those out.
We don't have plot books anymore.
We're not doing that anymore, okay.
They don't sell them?
Yeah.
Where do people get them?
Farm and Home Publishing, that's who makes them, we don't make them here.
Just, I know you don't make them here, but you don't sell them here either, you're saying?
No, um they don't cha- make the changes that we send them, so people are under, come in every year to get a new one and.
There's nothing different.
Well, there might be some things different, but it's not the information we send them, so.
And then, and then they think it's a plot book provided by accounting, so then they get upset that the information's not correct and we're providing bad information, so it's kind of been a headache.
Yeah.
So it's, I, I got a thing in the mail, postcard in the mail, just as I assume as a farmer, but say, you know, somebody different doing it. Do you have any idea what that's about, or?
I have no idea, it's not.
Yeah, I didn't expect you to, so what's the story with Farm and Home Publishing, they're just, they're just not keeping up, or they don't, who knows?
I don't know, we, they ask for, well, there were two years they didn't even ask for the information, and then the next year they did ask for the information and then, then they, we asked. To get a draft of it before they published it, and.
Yeah.
There were still not changes made, some, others not, it just seemed to be random, so we weren't gonna mislead the taxpayers that they were getting new plot books when they really weren't.
Right. I suppose they, if somebody ch- if somebody called on them, called them on it, excuse my choice, they just say, well, this is what they gave us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, then it kind of, he said, she said, they said, they said.
Yeah. Yeah.
Liquor license and beer permits.
Do you not do cigarette licenses with anyone? No.
We don't get much anymore for any of that, I don't know that Brittany's had any.
We're charging for the liquor license and beer permits and stuff, I'm just curious why we're only at a hundred and sixty dollars for.
We don't have as many.
Okay, so those two that we approved today, those will increase that number then or?
You'd have to talk to Brittany, I don't know what she gets for those, she handles all that, so.
Oh, okay, okay. I just thought it was odd because, I mean, last few years it's tracked pretty high for those, but this year we're only at a hundred and sixty for those.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if there was a change there.
Yeah, we don't have as many, there's. We don't have racers anymore, we don't have country club anymore.
Yeah, racers changed to pit stop and then it shut down.
They're closed, they're closed, yeah.
They have good pizza.
They did have good pizza.
I'd never been in there.
You go like a pizza case, long, I mean, five years ago it was.
Good pizza.
Uh, country club, will it be in the county when it reopens, or, or it's paid?
I think it is in the county. Cause I.
I don't care, I'm, I'm not a big reader.
Now I'm, now I'm doubting myself too, but I thought we had had it before, but. Might have to check with Brittany.
The only thing we got annexed in the city was the stuff on the west side of Robbinson Drive or whatever, whatever road that is.
Yeah, um west side of Country Club Road.
It was in the city.
Would be city, so no, the actual um cell house and stuff would be in incorporated, I think. That's why I just had it in my head that it was out there when I saw Eagle Hills, I didn't even look at the address.
Yeah, I shouldn't have counted on that, I just heard on the street somewhere that they were building a new building out, out the country.
Oh, they, they posted pictures on Facebook of.
But I don't even know about that, but, so I thought whatever they had out there, they were moving in, but they could, I feel their license was expired, I'm sure they wanna renew it in the meantime.
Mm-hmm.
Sure it's a big part of the route, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, anything else in auditor, or? Or wherever we. Maybe we can move on to. I don't know that we really need to go through anything in civil defense, that's emergency management, that budget's all set for the commission, so. Not much we're really gonna be able to do with that, so.
So they'll, they'll, that commission will set the salary, it will just be in for our share of it, or what's the story there?
They set it at four percent.
We've set it at, yeah, we've set it at four percent. That's what we've submitted.
So.
Our.
Where do you see that at here?
Oh, well, hers is. A little bit different.
It's, it's split up between people.
Yeah, so I think.
Her fiscal years are different, yeah.
Officer salary, officer salary is split up right here because of the, they get grant money back.
Yeah.
And their fiscal year is different than ours.
Five years or whatever.
They're separate.
Her fiscal year is different.
Fiscal year's different.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah.
October through.
It is, yeah, so we have three months we have to differentiate from the rest.
Who does that?
Whoever's in charge of emergency management.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like the state emergency management association.
Yeah.
That's the state, it's Department of Homeland Security.
Yeah. And that was one thing that they were talking about changing with the twenty-nine C is trying to get onto the same fiscal years the rest of the counties and states, yeah.
Oh, that'd be nice. Cause all those different account numbers for that department is crazy.
Was the same thing true of conservation then too?
No.
No, conservation, they have essentially an advisory board, right?
No. Mm-hmm.
Well, it's not an advisory board, EMS is an advisory board, but conservation has a board and, um, but we have ultimate authority for the whole.
And you, and I think he changed everything.
Yeah, I've got the.
This was, this was sitting here, day was all for conservation?
That's what he provided.
That.
That you had the other day, that's what he gave.
When he gave his presentation, that's what he discussed.
When he gave his presentation, he goes off of that.
Yep.
So this is junk now?
You don't.
Sorry, unless you wanna look back on it, but.
In courthouse, there was no.
I mean, how far are you guys, are you still looking at conservation?
Well, I was just gonna say, average of eleven and a half years of experience and for us, we averaged twelve point five, so we're right at average in that category. Do you have anything in courthouse?
No, I just wrote a note about the parking lot, we already talked about that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a note about it too, that driveway, I put it in my place, I hired Doug, but it was fifty thousand dollars, I find it difficult to believe. The parking lot out here, fifty-five thousand, maybe labor.
Well, that's with using secondary roads is your labor.
I heard that, but I still.
Yeah.
I still, uh.
Well, materials alone is up there. I heard uh something interesting at my um transportation policy board that asphalt is getting right up there the same as concrete.
Yeah.
Because the mixtures that, you know, they've been working on the mixtures and stuff, so now asphalt for, you know, reliability and length of life is actually up there with concrete, but it's still less for cost.
Because of the labor part, yeah.
I think so, something, something along those lines.
Anything else, conservation?
Yeah, I already passed conservation.
Oh, I just had a note on there about Ron, but then I think we kinda answered that question through the talks about the different pay scales or whatever.
Who filled, sorry, your movement, you probably passed it, but who filled out the sheets for the courthouse, is that you?
Mm-hmm.
So just, just for, I'm sure we, you answered this twice already, but here we go again, so what's the court, what's the courthouse postage, is that for, is that for sending out all the, all the tax notices and everything, or?
So that's how much the, so like the tax notices and stuff are different, they go, we send those out, um.
Okay.
So I don't think that that.
So third party's hired for those.
Yeah, so this is our postage machine that we have in the break room, or not break room, the.
Yeah, we have those involved.
Yeah, so it's the amount that um gets put in postage, and then what happens is, once we know how much is for each department, then we bill each department. Um, and so then they.
So that's gotta be back on the revenue side?
From the departments, yes.
It'll be expense on the other departments, but revenue.
It's a revenue on this department.
Well, and it is an expense too.
It's a revenue and expense.
Yeah, it's.
It washes out.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's just paid under there, so it's in one account.
So forty, fuel is to eat the building?
Mm-hmm.
Just for the sake of time here, I guess we talked about the deputies and stuff before, but since we only got three minutes here, um treasure and recorder, we can keep those where they were at like we talked before.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like that's what we're telling everyone.
Was there, was there any others that had requested steps for percentage that I don't think of?
Well, I think those are the only offices that can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think there was any others, but.
The only other would've been the sheriff, but he didn't request that, he, he said.
Oh, that'll be.
Yeah.
That'll be something to figure out too.
Yep.
Is his budget pretty much done, maybe did he put in the seven and the four, I can't remember.
Yes, I did see seven and four in there.
Yes.
So I mean, and then our hands are kinda tied with the rest because if something happens as far as them being a union, I mean, there's just not much we can do about that.
Well, and if they don't get it certified before a budget is due to be published, we can't really wave around.
No.
It'll be in next year.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't come to us till into March, it won't really matter.
We won't, we can't, yeah. So where are we gonna leave off then, cause you have to give one.
Yeah, I probably need to go here pretty quick.
So do, are we gonna pick back up at data processing, I didn't have any notes, I mean.
I just opened up there, but I didn't.
He changed, I mean, that, that's been changed, so, but I didn't have any notes on it. I did for district court either. Oh, I know, because he had said how it reflected something with the sheriff's budget, so I didn't know if we needed to look at that through the sheriff's budget.
So it'll.
He lowered his on whatever line item he would've, with tough books or whatever he said is gonna be covered now through.
Check there.
Tough books are just, are that just durable computer?
It's in, it's in their vehicles, they can take it in and out of their vehicles.
It's on top, yeah. And it, and it is very durable, yeah.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're eight to nine thousand a piece, just because of, of, you know, the material that they use for making it rigid.
And they're replaceable.
making it rigid and they're replaceable or what's it, no? No.
I don't think all.
I don't think so, yeah.
Because the, you know, that increased, the equipment budget increased two hundred fifty thousand dollars, so. I mean, I know that's a different fund and everything, but if that's something that doesn't have to get spent out of the general fund, that helps us.
Hmm hmm.
Yeah, that's, he's got his own fund for that, no.
That helps. A lot.
Yeah.
Hmm hmm.
So, is there a line item for the sheriff's office that would reflect that?
Yeah.
Are you looking for that item?
I'm trying to find that, but I don't know.
Cause that's a big difference, saying that would help our general fund.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we've typically budgeted that much every year.
Well, so he's got tough, sheriff tough books under here, but that was under our pub.
What page do you want?
Or to.
What budget?
Sheriff.
What page do you want?
So we're, the second page.
Sheriff's special, sheriff.
But that if you go up one line, he doesn't have anything in that budget for equipment.
But that was our, I mean, it doesn't even look like anything was budgeted in that since two thousand twenty two to twenty three.
Yeah, and that's where he would have used that for, you know, some tough books, but the equipment up there, uh, with the line above, I believe would have been
So, I mean.
Used for.
So it doesn't look like he budgeted anything.
No.
But I'm trying to find where that would have been previously.
So, so then why is it not questioning it, but why is it an extra two hundred fifty thousand then? It had to be somewhere, it's a lot of money.
Yeah. I know we would have had tough books in here before, but I thought they were on a rotation, couple a year, whatever.
Well, the only line that matches up with that line where it shows the sheriff tough books are both, would have been the line right before it, six thirty eight oh five, equipment, other.
They would. They would have been in something else.
Unless that was under data processing.
I should, oh.
Yeah. We switched computers to data processing, but I don't know if we switched the tough books to the data processing.
I don't remember if we switched tough books. I don't know if Derek's in there and grabbed them or not.
Is Derek here today?
He was.
Yeah.
We got programming and equipment down, page seven on sheriff, that's ten thousand. You're in the wrong.
Well, maybe it wasn't only tough books, I just heard tough books, but.
I would have said some questions.
Well, tough books, it's, it's tough books and radios for that, three fifty.
Yeah.
For the sheriff's tough books, was that out of your budget or was that out of his previous?
Yes. Nine one one.
No, not this, not this proposal prior to this budget.
Right, but, yeah.
So we try and do about a hundred thousand in radios about, depends on what the fire department needs for pay.
You're, you're not answering the question, are you getting there?
Well, so, I'm getting there, so, we try and do pages and radios for fire departments and EMS, so. This year has been short on that, and so we have extra budget for equipment, so we're gonna try and do some tough books before July first to spread that out. But I don't know exactly where that'll end up at, so after the meeting on the fourth, we'll have a better idea of who else needs radios.
Okay.
I know we've got about forty thousand committed for radios, so.
So, I think the question is historically, where did that come from?
For the county budget directly.
Yeah.
Which, which by the.
Sheriff's department, sheriff's department, yes.
Okay, that's.
So the two hundred fifty thousand extra.
Yes.
Is for both radios and tough books?
No, no, that two fifty is only for tough books for police department, sheriff's department, and then we're gonna do, um, it's called e-dispatches at fire departments, there's a little bit in there for that as well.
So when was the last time you bought tough books?
Twenty twenty three was when we did a big project for tough books.
Cause we're not seeing anything.
So, the only place we see it is right here where the.
We're not finding it.
Yeah.
It was probably out of motor vehicle would be my guess, because it's gonna be, um.
That, that would be.
And motor vehicle has three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's a lot.
The body camera, dash cameras, the install, the wire, I mean, all that would probably be where he took it out of.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we moved that to rural last year.
I would have never guessed that.
That, that's my guess, I can't answer for his budget, but that would, yeah.
No. That's, that's probably true, um.
He's got, you said twenty three, twenty four, yeah, twenty two, twenty three.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the computer names are twenty three, so we might have bought them in twenty two, twenty three.
Right, I, I can't answer that off the top of my head. Okay, so yeah, that would have been two hundred and fifty three thousand that year would have been.
Well, two hundred eighty thousand was budgeted there, twenty three, twenty four.
And that, that could have been more for new vehicle.
Right, and it could have been spread a little bit too, sometimes on those bigger stuff, we try and split the fiscal year as well, so.
Oh, we're just basically trying to figure out if there's a way that that, anything in the sheriff's budget could be reduced at all if that's going into nine one one. That way, that's what we were trying to figure out where it came from, because that would be.
It would be.
A big difference in a budget.
So, I guess, let me grab my sheet for those guys.
Well, some of it would be for, um, of on a police, so that wouldn't be out of our budget, so we wouldn't have that whole piece. For the extra increase.
So, their portion is gonna be a lot smaller than that. Roger is the only one that doesn't have a full tough book setup, which is nine thousand, um. I don't know if you could cut anything out of his or not, you'd have to ask him on motor vehicle. Um, the prices on those installs, I know has been going up from, um, the cage, all the wiring harnesses, all the lights and sirens, I know that's been going up, I think we're about nineteen thousand car now. Um, through Main Street just for that portion, I think our vehicles are about ninety thousand per vehicle is what they're up to now, so.
Okay, well, we were just wondering.
Yeah, and that current motor vehicle line, he's got three hundred thousand, so, um, but I believe he's looking at at least getting one to two more patrol vehicles. If I remember right, could be, I can't.
You mean replacing?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that's typical schedule, replace.
Updating, okay.
Okay, you guys, yeah, thank you.
And hundred eighty thousand, but that probably goes with everything the strip and the, and the tough books, it's not that tough books anymore.
The upfitting, yep.
Why?
Yeah, the upfitting lights, sirens, um.
Markings.
Markings, any armor stuff that's in there.
So they would also have fuel coming out there, so they're not hundred fifty a car, for new stuff, it'd be probably in that ninety to hundred. But they'd have fuel, they'd have repairs, they'd have all that coming out of motor vehicle.
Yeah, but, yep, so I wouldn't even touch that line, but that would have been probably where the tough ones would have come out of if you'd been budgeting for them, but.
I was gonna have a question on that one.
And it is three fifty eight.
So are we gonna start at elections next time, or where are we starting?
Um, yeah, we could start at elections next time.
Yeah, probably.
Do you guys want budget workshops on the schedule for next Tuesday, I'm not gonna be here, but do you want them on?
We could just, well.
Well, we're just gonna keep revisiting just so we know.
Yeah, just throw budget workshop other, and then that way it kinda leaves it open if we wanna call people in if we need something, um, although we should put ambulance down, ambulance and that other, because we need to talk to Phil.
And potentially sheriff if, if, um, we go over in the.
Well, yeah, because we really didn't go over that much with the sheriff.
No, we didn't.
So, maybe.
Do you wanna see if he's available?
I'd say, I'd say list those two for sure.
So ambulance, sheriff, and then just put on for other.
Others as needed.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
If you have a question, Howard, I saw you hand up for something before. Got tired.
Yeah, I was scared, uh. Yeah, I was just gonna ask, like, I woke up down, so I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything, um. Tonight and then next Tuesday night is the emergency management budget thing at the EPC building, and then Farm Bureau is the weekend after that, but then. You're not planning on being back here after tonight this week, is that correct?
Okay, I would be careful with the EMA, but, uh, public hearing, if we.
Nope. You don't have to go to that.
Yeah, you don't have to be there, okay.
You can go if you wanna go, but like.
It'll be on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. You don't have to go to that, the representative like can go to it and I can report back, but you're more than welcome to go.
Wha- wha- what was I being careful about?
Well, I was just, if it wasn't gonna be on our agenda, then having a forum there, um, that's what I was actually gonna say.
Oh, okay. All right.
We didn't want to have a forum without it being.
Ag- again, if you're not deliberating anything.
No, you would, you wouldn't be voting on anything, you'd just be there observing, yeah. Which isn't a whole thing.
I don't need, I don't need to be there, that's why Amber's going. If you're going, if this third judicial thing that happened, oh, that's, that's not you, you're.
Just A J D C.
Your central eye with juvenile delinquent detention center.
Yeah. Do you wanna go to that as alternate learn?
I don't know, you tell me, I.
It wouldn't be a bad idea.
How often?
Uh, it's every month, but, um, that's always the fourth Friday of the month is what we aim for.
Uh.
So that's this week?
This coming Friday.
And where does that mean now?
El Dora.
Are you going, at what time?
Ten o'clock is when it starts, it's not terribly early, but it's an early, and I mean, gotta leave decent time to get there.
I'm not looking.
I mean, you can ride with one, you don't have to.
Yeah, no, I, um, I will watch, see what's all about.
Bring with, don't bring a notebook with all your questions.
Do the insurance, and maybe we talked about this, excuse me.
That will be on the agenda for next week, do you want me to put self insurance on the budget list?
Well, in wondering about Tammy changing those rates, are we not gonna change the?
I will go through and change them unless you tell me not to, yeah.
Okay, that's a, I couldn't remember if we talked about it, well, meaning, you know, we talked about the fifteen percent?
Oh.
That, I don't know if we've ever said change those, and did we?
Oh, yeah, I think we did.
No, we said after today, but.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You, you were gonna find out what happened today, but I assumed I was going to, so.
Well, I didn't get the numbers.
Okay.
So you're gonna change every paper again, or? As long as you're, it's like a, I'm sorry, okay.
It's pretty involving, yeah.
That's basically, we got that from her saying that's where it's looking like it's gonna be.
That's basically what we said we need to plan for to make sure that our, our.
Fund is okay.
Yeah, our self insurance.
Right, yeah, I remember that now, yes, yeah, the insurance itself wasn't going up that much, but.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
Yeah, I mean, it is, um.
And we can talk more on that next week.
Okay, all right.
So.
Yeah.
And hopefully she'll have some more numbers for us, and have some other things to look at, and this is, don't worry more for that, but.
But we should have a pretty clear vision of how things work then when Tammy's back, that following week, and go through fund balances and stuff.
Yeah, we just have to make sure we're making, if we're gonna make any changes, we need to make notes, cause I'm sure whoever's sitting in here may not have the same access as you, or would, or.
They won't put it in the budget, they'll just make notes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, okay.
Um.
I wouldn't print anything.
Yeah, we probably don't need to print it at this point, but when you get all those entered in, can you send the fund balance projections like you did that in email that last time?
If I have time.
If, yeah, if you do, I mean.
No, no, you need to do it while you're gone on vacation.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Look, just for reference, those are five year lifecycle, I know, so we try and get into the sixth year before we purchase.
The tough books.
The tough books, yeah, we do a five year warranty and we'll try and place them.
I'm like motion wager.
All right, we have a motion by us and second by Stecker for adjournment, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay, motion carried, we are adjourned at four oh five.
All right, you good, Carter?
Yeah, Jamie?
Yes.